So good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Lake Forest Park City Council Committee of the whole meeting for October twenty-third, Monday, October twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three to order. At this time, do we have any citizen comments? Matt, do we have anybody in the audience? I can't.
No, we don't have anybody online.
Okay, thank you so much. And we have three discussion items, and I just wanted to mention tonight that we have our friend Councilmember Ferratani, who is joining us from Japan. Thank you for joining us. And I suspect the weather's a little better there than it is here. It's been pretty cold and rainy. And we have excuse me, three, not three, we have six discussion items, so we're gonna have to move forward with some of these in an expeditious manner. The first one is, I'm just gonna walk through this really quickly, so everybody understands what we have on the agenda. Deliberations and recommendations for the mayor's proposed mid-biennial budget adjustment for two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-four. Council letter to Sound Transit. Our colleague, Councilmember Bodie, is gonna lead us in that conversation. I'm gonna lead us in a conversation about a letter to Sound Transit CEO, to Sound Transit CEO Julie Tim, requesting support for lowering speed limit. Speed limits on SR five twenty-two to thirty-five miles per hour. We have a proposed surplus real property ordinance that Councilmember Ferratani and Councilmember Goldman are gonna lead us in. And then a quick conversation, very brief touch on potential red light camera installation at the intersection of one fifty-third and Botha Way. And the final thing is, Councilmember Goldman very graciously agreed to walk us through some of the Sound City Association regional boards and committees, because that's a very important group of positions to fill. Are there any questions about the discussion items? All right, with that, let's go on to item A, deliberations and recommendations for the mayor's proposed mid-biennial biennial budget adjustment for two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four. I believe that's Council, Director. Sorry to call you Councilmember.
Change roles tonight.
There you go.
So I am, I have a presentation to go over just a couple slides, very brief, don't worry. Oh, am I in control of this? Maybe. Nope. Oh, okay, thank you, Matt, if you were the one that controlled that. So walking into the the first question, which was the community partner budget funding, so I do realize that is a little, oh, this one's a little bit better. I do not. So we, yeah, we can definitely print it out, but if you walk through, so on the left side, it starts with the nineteen-twenty budget. And then it goes into the nineteen actual, the twenty actual. And then it walks over to the twenty-one, twenty-two, and pretty much all of the budgets have stayed at the exact same funding level, except for the senior center, which is at the top. So I added in this description for it to be the the description which will match page sixty-nine that we were referencing back to in our actual budgets. And so I did the the description, which is matching the budget and in our software system, and then the entity that's receiving the funds, so we could do the full crosswalk of of who, what entity. And then the next question that was pertaining, I just figured I'd put this all up or this slide up, was the Friends of Third Place Commons, and you can see at the bottom of this sheet, the entity receiving is under community development, which is budgeted for two years at fifty-seven thousand. And so that, those were those couple of questions. And then I figured, so the main, the 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 main change for the community partners funding was the Shore.
Shirley Cards.
Well, the only, what I was gonna say is, the only one that did increase funding was the LFP and Shoreline Senior Center. That was the only one that was actually increased. But I will say that there were entities that were that did receive other types of funding through CARES and through some of the ARPA funds. I do wanna point out that the Regional Crisis Response Agency, RACER, that those don't have budgets in the past because it didn't exist, not because it wasn't funded, it just didn't exist, but so just to make sure that's really clear. Probably should have put NA across the whole thing. So do you want me to just continue?
Just pause for a second.
Or do you want me to wait until we have physical copies?
I think, just just one moment, Director Vaughn. Councilmember Ferratani, you had had a request to increase the Shore Lake, Lake Forest Park Shore Lake Arts Council. Mistaken, okay.
No, no, you don't mistake him.
Okay. Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, that that I was waiting to, I was just presenting, this is what's in the actual original adopted budget and letting council have the discussion on whether or not you desired to have that budget increase. That's definitely a council discussion.
Colleagues, thoughts on topic? Let's let's be expeditious about this. I've, I'm gonna just lead off by saying, as I indicated before, I fully support Councilmember Ferratani's request for that addition. Any other thoughts on that topic?
I supported my concern with about fairness, but since none of the other groups have requested or expressed concern about the budgets that they were, you know, scheduled to keep receiving, that I was, I was fine with that. That my main concern was the
Equity.
Was, yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Bodie. Mr. Lee. Mr. Goldman.
I'm just saying, I I support it as well, and I agree, the equity, we we vetted it, and this is the only ask we've received, so I support it.
Okay. Fair enough, duly noted. Thank you, Councilmember Ferratani, and and we'll just make a note of that and bring it to the budget when we adopt it, if we could please.
I appreciate it, colleagues.
A quick question.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
If I could have a question just about the numbers here, just kind of looking at the actual, because these are reimbursable costs that we're we're funding, is that why some of them don't have a lot of actual year-to-date distributions? Is, do we usually get that, like, towards the end of the year? I'm just kinda trying to flesh out.
Maybe you can looking at some of the pilgrims like
Like the senior center, fifty over the two-year budget, so this year would have been twenty-five if it was distributed in equal numbers, or and we've only got eighteen actual, is that just because they haven't submitted those items for reimbursement yet?
So that's a a couple quarters so far yet in two thousand and twenty-three, and that is a two-year budget, as you explained, so.
So so there's no, you don't have any concerns as the finance director of where these numbers are coming in, and that they will get any asks will get funded.
So the way that it's it's presented is normally they submit quarterly. And so we just finished a a quarter, so the likelihood is we will see another invoice. But we don't see a monthly invoice for most of these entities, it's normally a quarterly invoice.
And so for like the Shore Lake Arts, they just haven't submitted a a large request yet in any of their quarterly invoicing.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
So as you can see from some of the history, they, you know, there there does have to be, there are some rules behind the agreements, and if they, so they have to provide backup in addition. So walking to my next and final slide to show you how brief this presentation will be, was the investments. So here, this is, you're seeing the the government agency bond investments. And walking down, the first, we we've actually purchased three at a two million dollar level, and one just matured this last month, and so we were in the middle of reinvesting that. So the system's already, that was implemented and approved, the strategy that was approved by the Budget and Finance Committee is already working and in place. And the first two are just a little bit of a different, that we we purchased them, and then they show as the par value is the the amount plus the interest. But I walked through this with Peter Becker, our time value investment contact, and he said that I am presenting this correctly, showing that the variance of the eighty-one thousand dollars on the first one and the hundred and ten is truly defined as interest. Or what you would call on a bond, they like to call it yield. So and those two words are are exchangeable. And so here you can see, as you walk down for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, I will just state that the first couple, the coupon rate, and this is where I'm going to explain my level of knowledge on this, and if you wanna go much further, we're gonna have to bring Peter in. I'm just gonna just preface it and state where my my knowledge ends on these. The first handful, the first three were purchased at a discount, meaning that the, or meaning that the coupon rate is lower, and when we get that bond back, it will come back at the full million dollars. So that's part of where you're getting your interest rate. So the yield to maturity on the right-hand side, that column is the true interest rate that the city is receiving. But when you multiply out the numbers for bonds three through eight, the appropriate way to do so, and the money that will, the city will be receiving in immediate interest will show from the coupon rate. And then the ones below, being six through eight, you're gonna see that that coupon rate is actually higher than the yield to maturity, which is the interest rate. And that's the difference of it being at what they define as a premium. And so we're getting more, and then the same concept, you'll get the million dollars back to reinvest, plus the interest. And then you can see, as we've discussed, the maturity dates are are stair stepping, so we've got two and twenty-four, two and twenty-five, one and twenty-six, two and twenty-seven, and so as the first bond, number one matures next March, then we will put those into probably a two thousand and twenty-six and a twenty-eight and continue to ladder. That being said, the short-term interest is performing well on interest in addition, which is part of been, which has been part of the whole interest discussion, interest investments. And that is where I will stop and ask if there's any questions.
Colleagues, thoughts, comments? I just commented, hey, getting three point four to, what's our range here, four point nine two is far better than point three to point five we were getting previously. Meaning we were really basically losing ground and almost a million dollars in interest by twenty twenty-eighth by my math. Just shy of it. Mr. Lebo.
Thank you for the presentation. Did I understand that you said one one had already matured or not?
That is correct.
Okay, it just doesn't show up on this. Is that correct?
What does show up is the reinvestment.
Okay.
We went ahead and and reinvested, we broke out the, we invested three bonds at two million to make sure and we laddered those to the point of making sure that the interest, because the bonds were a little bit different, that the interest showed within this first biennial budget, so it had to show within by the end of two thousand and twenty-four. So we did just have one mature in September, so and when we reinvested that, we reinvested it, I can't quite remember, was that the second one in twenty-five and the second one in twenty-seven? I'd have to go back and look and reconfirm that. But yes, and so we're, that's
Thank, thank you both. I would say, just on point two, I would like to, before the end of the year, consider a budget and finance meeting where we consider re adjusting slightly upwards the the investment cap, if if everyone's amenable to that. We don't have a meeting scheduled at this point, but we could, yeah, yes, Councilmember Riddle.
Very interested in supporting that. I think one of the questions we had was like that cash flow, so that we know where we feel comfortable. So I think that'd be great to have available for that discussion of, are we gonna raise our cap? Of, or or our, or not our cap, but you know what I mean?
I'm not gonna try to do math on TV.
Do not, but I just think that that's a piece of the puzzle that I think we appreciate seeing as we start thinking about investing more of these items into these longer-term bonds.
So I'm just going to state that that from the finance director's point of view, that about this, this ten million where the city's at is a sweet spot right now, because your finance department is really stretched and bandwidth. And this, this does take some some work to to do some of this. So I'm politely stating that between me and my accounting supervisor, we are very stretched at the moment, and I will probably politely leave it at that.
Thank you, Director Vaughn. Councilmember Bodie.
Yes, I just wanted to say that even if we raise the cap of what's eligible, of course, you're a bandwidth and other considerations can affect what you actually do, so. So it's not a, it's not a demand if we if we do give you more flexibility going forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Bodie. In my mind, it's more of sort of, we we had said previously up to X amount, and we wanna just give you the freedom to, because it's successful. Councilmember Goldman.
Yeah, thanks. A question and a comment. So the question, what sort of interest rate are we getting in the local government pool?
So in the local government investment pool is I think, I can't remember if that one is just over five percent right now, so the liquid side of things is so the local government investment, both the Pacific Premier Reserve Account and a local government investment pool are over five percent. The Pacific Premier is five point one-six, and the local government is five point three eight.
Yeah, thanks. So my comments are, I think that takes some of the pressure off you, because even if you're not able to invest, if we if we approve another two million, even if you can't invest it right away, that two million is still collecting a substantial amount of interest as is. And then also just pointing out that I think your columns, if anything, are understating, because all the columns for twenty-five and beyond assume that when a bond matures, we just sell it completely. Even if we're not getting the same interest rate, if we reinvest it, we'll still be getting some level of interest, so it's it's not as if our interest dwindles to nothing by two thousand and twenty-eight.
So that is correct. And this is very secure for, from the finance standpoint, because when I'm starting to build the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, this is, this, this is guaranteed. This is locked in, so I know for a fact that I can budget this level of money across all funds, which helps us with some additional ongoing costs. So a portion of our cash flow then is very stable on defining an additional revenue source. So that is why finance gets so excited about government agency bonds.
Excellent question, Councilmember Goldman. Other thoughts on investments? And then returning back to the bigger picture our budget discussions, any other comments? Did you have anything additional to share with us on the budget? And colleagues, I think we're pretty clear where we are. And if you have any questions for Director Vaughn or Mr. Hill, let's make sure we get them to them with a lot of consideration, so they have advance notice. Councilmember Bodie.
I just wanted to say, because I came into the budget discussion later, that I appreciate the conservative nature of our planning. And and yet we've been able to adapt and be flexible, so I appreciate the 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 whole team, including you, City Administrator Phil, and 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 Finance Director Vaughn, to be able to get us to this point, and so that we're coming into the second year of our budget, and we do have additional expenses, but we're, we're, we're proceeding smartly and and still conservatively, all things considered. So I know we had some comments about that, and I think, I think our our commenter wasn't up to date on the additional spending pressures that we were having that that weren't really optional. So just wanna say thank you for getting us to this point.
Thank you, Councilmember Bodie. Very appropriate comments. I really appreciate that as well. I think there's, I think this is a responsible budget. Yes, there are places where we could find a little bit here and there. But that doesn't make this a livable city, and I think we have to make sure that we're thinking about that, and I think the administration has a very responsible budget. So thank you both. With that, shall we move on? I'm sorry, Councilmember Ferratani, did you have any comments? I didn't mean to leave you out here.
Oh, no, no, I think the discussion is appropriate and appreciate basically the team's work. Just wanted to save time in the interest of the five other items we've got.
Okay, let's move on to the council letter to Sound Transit. Councilmember Bodie has graciously provided this to us.
Thank you very much. I was thinking about the fact that we finally did get some real engagement with Sound Transit, real in the sense that we we met and had discussions, not necessarily quite as real as I might have wanted it to be in terms of proceeding towards mutually agreeable resolutions. But we've had a lot to digest, including the latest information that they've provided about, which they've provided to Art City, Core, Lake Forest Park Stewardship Foundation. And there was actually a face-to-face meeting that Councilmembers Ferratani and French attended, where there was back and forth discussion. They've also done, very recently, a few frequently asked questions. But I I do think that where we still want to update where we are with the board and share a viewpoint. So this letter is designed to circle back with the Chair and the Board members of Sound Transit and give them an update. And if it all possible, I would like to have this be a response from the council with our colleague recusing himself. And and so procedurally, after consulting with Deputy Mayor French, the thought is that we would discuss this here today and then potentially make decisions, formal decisions at the council meeting on Thursday. If procedurally. Substantively, I've tried to vet all the information in here to make sure it's correct. And and I've also circled around with some of you and also talked to to Phil. And there are a couple of things in here that I wanted to correct. First of all, in in seven, the first seven, that's one of the errors, in the first seven, the sentence that starts with further, we understand that Sound Transit wants to span the creek with a pedestrian bridge at city expense. That is no longer the case. I had slightly outdated information, and so that sentence would get deleted. And the second seven would become number eight, so. The, the the premise of this is that we have a lot of impacts, and there are ways to not eliminate the impacts on our city, but reduce them that still have a cost benefit. It's, we're still making the point that there could be more of a win-win here between us and Sound Transit. They could save money, which they seem to be hemorrhaging on the cost of this project are only gonna go up. I am absolutely sure, and the kinds of increases they've been seeing lately are for their projects are very huge, so it would make sense for them to reconsider now rather than later. They have presented some information on why they don't support queue bypasses and signalized lights, but they amount to looking at Google Maps at certain points in time and saying that the congestion patterns on One Forty-Fifth, where they are implementing queue bypasses and on on Botha Way are significantly different. And from my point of view, what I see is the congestion backs up at the lights, right? So I do think there, maybe there wouldn't be the full two-minute benefit of a BAT, but I think that it would come pretty close, and the costs and impacts are so disproportionate on us. So this is supposed to be polite and reminding them that we're still here and that we have some perspective on this project. So with that, I'll 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 stop the intro and kind of open it up.
Colleagues, questions for Councilmember Bodie?
Oh, and if you didn't see, I just want to say one more thing. There are two tables attached that summarize kind of the time, the travel time benefits between no build and and build that are some transit materials. So, sorry.
No, thank you, Councilmember Bodie. Let's start with Councilmember Ferratani, please.
Yes, and thank you very much, Deputy Mayor French. Well, I'm fully in support of this letter. I think it's an appropriate thing for the council to take up on Thursday. And one of the things that was very frustrating at that meeting, and perhaps you can put your own take on this, but was the fact that they kept referring back to traffic studies that had been done in the SEPA, and when asked about the actual methodology of those traffic studies, about especially the time savings in the eastbound direction, comparing One Hundred and Forty-Fifth versus Botha Way, they were very not transparent. We've gotten back essentially, oh, just look at these things, which, you know, are tables and various things that are not appropriate for what we were trying to find out. So I think the whole process of getting the information, especially their methodology, has been very frustrating, and it ultimately seems like they are kind of relying, as Councilmember Bodie said, on this whole Google Maps thing, which I think is a kind of suspect way of doing this kind of study. So until they come with clearer information, I'm fully in support of this letter.
Thank you, Councilmember Ferratani. Now, just as as some data points, having, having been at the meeting as well with with my colleague, Mr. Ferratani, I too was very frustrated. I think that there was definitively misaligned goals there. It was sort of we're definitely, we're not on the same page, and there was references to we had asked for, and community members had asked, and community groups had asked for the substantive evidence for why they were saying a continuous bat, you know, bat lanes were required as opposed to queue jumps, and what they came back to us was basically with the consultants saying, well, we use Google Maps to to evaluate this, and subsequently, in communications with them, they're now saying we're doing an additional analysis of the timeframes, you know, in terms of what it would take for given various options. And to my mind, that says that it's, I came away from that meeting saying, please show your homework, and they did not show their homework, and now they're trying to show their homework. And with two university professors in the room, or remotely in in the room, I would say I would assume they would assume, they would say that's not acceptable, and I don't believe it's acceptable. So thank you, Councilmember Bodie, for bringing this to us. Councilmember Goldman.
Yep, thanks for for drafting this. I I do have some feedback, and I'm broadly in support, so please take this as all constructive feedback. I think the tone we wanna strike is is firm and polite. In the first paragraph where it says, at the last line, compared to its minimal transit, I feel that comes across a little bit adversarial to, as you, you know, almost as if we're trivializing the project.
Would you like the word modest?
Maybe just delete the word minimal and just compare to its transit.
Okay.
Just so that we don't come right out of the gate, we don't come across as as too aggressive. Let's see, you talked about the Bichette Lake Creek Bridge.
Um, item number five on the retaining wall. So I'm honestly, I kind of want to see, maybe delete that. And my reasoning is, in my mind, the retaining wall is is an overall win for us. The initial retaining wall was just going to be a completely barren monolith. And feedback we had from the community is that we didn't want a model with that the community wanted it to be artistic. They wanted there to be vegetation. And Sound Transit and Washita didn't have to give it to us, but staff negotiated very hard on that. And so we reached a compromise. So in my mind, that is a fairly substantial concession that we got. And if we come back and say, well, we're still unhappy with the retaining wall, I worry that it's going to come across as, well, we're never going, you know, the LFP is never going to be satisfied. And why should we bother negotiating with staff in the future if they're just going to say, still not good enough?
So I I hear you on that. Uh, to me, this was somewhat different because I was emphasizing the magnification of the noise. Um, a point I picked up from our fellow council member, Riddle. Um, so yes, I understand what you're saying because we have made progress on that and I and I understand that. Um, but I was trying to get at the fact that, so on the on the lakeside, we're going to be, people are going to be having the road be much closer to their houses and the buffer of the trees perhaps minimal, but the buffer that the trees and bushes provide will be gone. And on the other hand, there will be this retaining wall of of uh, you know, that goes for quite a long distance with varying heights that will reflect the noise uh, back towards those homeowners. So that that was the point. Perhaps it isn't expressed differently enough.
And I I'm with you. I I am very disappointed that they seem to have just ignored noise completely. And so maybe there's a way to kind of reframe it as like, we're happy that you've, the Sound Transit has worked with us on a design of the retaining wall. But we feel more needs to be done for noise mitigation.
Okay.
Um, next, let's see, um, I think I I echo Deputy Mayor French. I was very disappointed that they didn't do the analysis. And maybe we need to be just more explicit. Because I mean, what I heard the community say, and what I want is for Sound Transit to tell us if we do bat lanes, it'll cost this much money, it'll have this much property impacts, it'll save this much time. If we do queue jumps, it'll cost that much money, that much tree and property impacts and save that much time. And then we can do that, you know, we can say, well, okay, which one is worth it? And I read that PowerPoint and all they said is that basically bat lanes are good. And they didn't do the cost benefit analysis. So maybe if we could just explicitly say, what is it we want to see in this analysis?
I like that.
There there seems to be a bit of a miscommunication that what does the community want?
Right.
What is Sound Transit or their contractor giving us? And the more there's that miscommunication, the the more the community will continue to be upset, as will we.
Second, so I can, uh, just just so we can get some other comments on point prior uh, prior to your um, other thoughts. Colleagues, thoughts on point on Mr. Goldman's uh, excellent comments? Mr. Furtoni, any thoughts?
Uh, none. I think they're very appropriate.
Thank you. I I completely agree with you. The question of the wall, I I think that there was a little bit of maybe a little tiny bit of disconnect there. I understand the spirit of what Councilmember Bodhi is suggesting, and I certainly understand what you're saying. I think that amalgamation of the two makes a lot of sense. Please continue. One, one second.
I I thirded that take. I think we want to recognize the work that's been done because a lot of work has happened in the background uh, between staff and and our staff, their staff and um, council members probably is making our voices heard. Um, so I don't want them to feel like they weren't um, we weren't being a good partner in that because I think we're going to make a lot of successes through negotiation and mediation um, in the in the end. So I want us to recognize that. So thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you, Mr. Goldman. Please continue.
Um, really, my last point is, I am confused on the data. And so maybe, so in their most recent PowerPoint from the the meeting with Core, it looked like they were saying that 145th would save between two and seven. So this is all going eastbound. 145th would save two to seven minutes and the LFP corridor would be two to nine minutes. But then in the table, it seems to say that the 145th corridor is saving about 10 minutes and then two minutes. So I don't know if if the there have been more recent studies, but I guess I I'm just struggling to wrap my head around where all these different numbers are coming from.
It is really hard and uh, I keep trying to go through to the data and get um, the uh, the information, but these tables are still what Sound Transit presents, as I understand it, when asked about the benefits and how they made the decision to favor the BAT lane. And so, yes, you're right. It's like two minutes versus 10 minutes. So and perhaps it isn't expressed as well, because I said it accounts for sixty-two percent of the ten minute peak of eastbound uh, travel times. But that is the ten, that is the nine, nine to 10 minutes kind of thing. So it's it's tough. I have tried to delve into this. I've tried to get assistance in delving into their own materials. I tried to read their responses and answers. I tried to remember what we've said, but basically the bulk of the savings is coming on 145. And they're doing queue jumps at the traffic lights. Um, and so uh, we went, you know, I was, I've been paying attention since oh, we heard about that presentation to where how the traffic backs up because I'm I'm often driving either direction at uh, at uh, around a peak time and the backup circle of lights. So anyway, that's uh, that's so that's why I use this, but it's also Councilmember Goldman why I attached it because I felt like uh, at least I, we can show what we're using their own information. This where the information, so.
Thanks for clarifying. It just, it confuses me because it almost feels like there's two different sets of books and I don't know ever like, we're reading one book and they're reading another book. And I I just want us to get on the same page, whatever whatever book that is, I just want us all on the same page.
It must have taken a while to get, it took a while even to get the the landing on at peak travel times eastbound, which I thought were about, um, it would be about two minutes or two point two minutes. It took a while to even get clarity on that. So.
Um, that's all my feedback. So Paul.
Thank you, Larry. Uh, great comments. Um, and really, really good discussion too. And 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 on point, I think that that's one of the frustrations we have. It is not our responsibility to be data scientists to figure this out. And we have to, it it really is on our our friends at Sound Transit to provide the the correct data that we can understand that is real clear and concise. I like what you said about very succinct kind of information saying, here, here's what we're looking for, where is it? And we haven't received that. And that's what I think that's part of where our frustration arises. And my my comment earlier about the misaligned goals of that meeting. Um, it really, that was an enormous waste of two hours and 10 minutes. And and I think that if if we'd had clear um, understanding, if if they had had clear understanding of those four items, for example, um, and and agreement on that, I think we would have had a far more productive meeting and it would would have been a lot more succinct and to the point. So.
Councilmember Goldman. Councilmember Goldman, I'd like to circle back with you on the itemized cost because I actually would like to get it be sp- pretty specific because what we, we want to see the costs itemized. We want to see the impacts, the relative impacts, but not just a lump sum, but you know, broken out by some of the major impacts. And then the same, the um, the uh, transit benefits, basically. So I may run a sentence or two by you to make sure it captures all the details that you want to have. That's okay.
Sounds good. Yep.
Perfect. Thank you. Colleagues, any other thoughts on this topic? And then we'll move on to the next one. We have a busy agenda. Yes, Councilmember Riddle?
I do have um, a couple of brief comments. One, as we're looking at the time savings, the one thing I'd like Sound Transit, if we're asking for what info we would need, is uh, does the not having the reduction along our corridor require like adding another bus to the system to make sure that it's flowing properly? Because they will be returning slower to the end. So is there and if there isn't that cost, then it's like, well, yay, like, there's no serious impact. Um.
Yeah, let's say it's one minute versus two. Does that mean you have to put on?
A whole new bus or, yeah, exactly. So if they can turn around and say, well, no, there's, there's no need for new buses. I think that really helps our case. Um, and then the other place that I struggle with in the letter is around comparing our impacts to the rest of the corridor. Because Kenmore already has all their lanes, Bothell already has all their lanes. And they weren't always like that. At some point, those roads were expanded. And at some point, I mean, look at the the properties on the um, south side of Botha Way and Kenmore. They have no parking in front of them because that was all taken away by the roadway when those were expanded. And I think it's disingenuous to say that, oh, our other cities had it easy and we're being impacted. We're just being impacted at a different timeline. And we got to skate for decades while they have been dealing with that impact. And I just think it's somewhat unfair to to make that comparison. I think we can definitely say that we are heavily impacted. And this is a big thing for our community to deal with. I just don't feel comfortable saying, but they got off easy because they didn't. They just got off or they just had their challenges earlier.
I will take a look at it with that in mind. I do think that I was primarily comparing with 145th, which is a place that's part of this construction project. I do think that compared to those property, those areas, they were primarily taking commercial properties. And um, the commercial properties have not suffered significantly. Where if you look at our homeowners on both sides and even our multifamily buildings, um, you know, I I have talked, I've had contact with a few of the condo board representatives. And they're very upset at what it's going to do to their um, uh, ingress, egress, parking, uh, just uh, noise, all those kind of issues. I think one, at least one of them has hired an attorney uh, because of the impacts feeling so severe. So I I think that is another distinction is the, you know, compared to those communities.
I would say, though, how many times those businesses on the south side of Botha Way have leases and how frequent businesses turn over, I would say that those commercial properties have seen an impact. They're just dealing with it because there's no way for them to, you know, make the road any uh, smaller or move it. So I just want us to be real sensitive to that. I think we have a need, we have a concern, but I just don't want to do so much comparing. When it comes to 145th, I mean, I wish that we had the same full full bat lanes um, along 145th. That would be ideal, right? Then we all have the the speed and we all have the same impact. Um, I recognize that probably the cost of doing that on 145th would delay our parking garage to somewhere around twenty-two hundred because the cost there of the purchasing the properties, the dealing with Seattle Shoreline, Washita, and um, maybe not so much Lake Forest Park because that's kind of the other piece of 145th. Um, but I I kind of I want to I won't, I I feel like they couldn't do it from a financial standpoint. And I feel like we're getting a more complete system and they're getting the less complete system. And I think the fact that we're seeing more speed gained there is just how bad the road is in the first place. It's just a really hard road to go down uh, in in rush hour traffic. Um, which is why I do avoid it at all costs. Um, but the buses don't have that option. They that's their route. So I guess I just want to be sensitive to that as well, that um, if they were to go ahead and do 145th and and flush it out, the the impacts to the rest of the 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 corridor would be, we wouldn't get it as much. We wouldn't get anything. We wouldn't get parking. So I I I do struggle with that comparison because I think for once, we're actually getting a system that's better designed than Seattle. And how often does that happen?
And I, from my point of view, the question is, what benefit at what cost and impact? And that's exactly back to Councilmember Goldman's point. But um, I encourage you, Councilmember Riddle, if there are places where you think it could be more sensitive or more balanced or something, uh, flag those places and just uh, get back to me on those sentences or phrases or whatever. Or like in the case of the transit benefits, the, you know, the adjective that's used to characterize something. So um, I I understand what you're saying. I um, I think though that uh, on your comment on the parking garage, oh, I'm not, I don't think the parking garages are ever going to get built, looking at the Sound Transit budget. Perhaps I'm a pessimist. I don't know. And you're an optimist.
Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Furtoni's been waiting here patiently. Mr. Furtoni?
Oh, yeah. And uh, just to uh, Councilmember uh, Riddle's point, I I think we can incorporate it because the point has always been the impact on residences. So if we just uh, look at the last sentence, not to wordsmith too much, but I'm just literally writing impacts on residences would probably do it.
Thank you, Councilmember. I agree completely. I I I appreciate Councilmember Bodhi making the distinction between the commercial and the residential because it is a number, quite a number of households. Um, and the other thing I would say too, um, is that just a general reminder that the city of Seattle basically didn't come to the table on this conversation on 145th. So uh, what they did was was less than um, participatory. So I I I think it's really important to recognize that I'm not concerned about what Seattle didn't get. I'm concerned about this, the holistic approach to this system seems to be broken. And I think we're getting the bigger end of the and the brunt of the impacts. Um, and I think that it is really important for us to to say to the broader region in Sound Transit, we want to do our part. At the same time, we want to make sure that we are um, considering the environmental and the the illatorious impacts to that are generational, multi-generational nature to our community. That they need to be mitigated carefully.
Uh, two quick two quick comments. Um, first of all, Seattle got a station at 130th that wasn't in one, anything the voter approved. And that was what they put their um, energy behind. Uh, and uh, I I I, you know, for all we know, uh, that that was that was a factor. Um, but but to me, it's interesting because uh, obviously, when the board is looking at the, it's policy capital. Um, Seattle has worked a lot in Little LFP. So uh, so this is an effort to try to have our voices heard, but in the appropriate way. So I I appreciate all these comments. I think they're all good.
Councilmember Riddle, there we go.
Yeah. Um, yeah, and I think, I mean, they're uh, so we can continue to talk about that um, wordsmithing, but I did want to bring up bus connections as um, uh, Councilman Goldman mentioned that the bus connections, and this isn't directly related to that, but how they're designing that 145th really impacts the bus connections right there of Botha Way, Lake City, and 145th. So if there's a an appropriate way to integrate that in here as to part of our concern is that because yeah, because 145th is not getting the full treatment with the full bat lanes, it's messed up how our people can move through the community. Um, so if if there's a way, if you feel that's appropriate, I I'd like something in there about that.
Well, plus we're kind of losing bus service. Like maybe someday we'll get a whole bunch of five twenty-two buses going the right way and everything and it'll and it and it won't help uh, anyone in Southern Gateway. Um, but but we're actually, what's ironic is we're still considered a high-capacity transit city and we're losing bus service as we uh, and it may come back. But in terms of all the comprehensive planning requirements and all those things, uh, we're in there with uh, you know, Shoreline and other cities that have a lot more traffic.
Well, and indeed too, we've lost bus service inadvertently because of economic conditions and it you know, staffing concerns on the 104 and um, it is, it is a challenge. The bus service that was in place for well before, I mean, I was riding a bus down to the university when I was little uh, to my father's office and onwards from there. And the these things have all changed now, which is really kind of striking. Mr. Goldman?
I'm just on point with that. Um, yeah, I do have strong feelings about what's happening at the intersection of uh, 145th and Botha Way. Um, maybe I could just kind of try to distill that to a couple of sentences about lost bus service and then send that to you. And then maybe that would be bullet nine. Thank you.
Yeah.
Just a final note, colleagues, just be sensitive to the um, not, make sure we don't have a serial meeting and make sure it's one-way directed and no, no, no loop, please.
Consent to me and I want it.
Yeah. Um, with that, any other thought? Um, with that, any other thoughts, Mr. Fertani? I think, okay, let's move on. Uh, so, uh, just, uh, next steps, uh, Councilmember Bodie will, will affect the edits and the suggestions that people send to her or have mentioned tonight. Um, as she, she's, uh, appropriate and then we will, um, bring this to council on Thursday night for a, a vote to decide which way to go, how to support it.
My proposal, whatever we decide is we would delegate Councilmember French to sign on behalf of the signatories. Basically, so we wouldn't have to collect a whole bunch of signatures.
I'm happy to do that. Okay, let's move on to the next, uh, topic here because we are definitely going to run out of time. Um, so this next item is letter to, uh, CEO Tim requesting her support for lowering the speed limit on SR five twenty two to thirty five miles an hour. Councilmember for, for Tanya, I email, emailed that to you earlier. Uh, just the beginning of the meeting. So in case you do not have that, I'll just read this into the record, um, since this, we did not have it in the packet. Um, dear CEO Tim, thank you for taking the time on October third of this year to meet with me, Councilmember Fertani, members of the Core Citizens Group and members of the Lake Forest Park Stewardship Foundation. We sincerely appreciate the consideration and efforts by your team to make this meeting happen. I want also to, to also sincerely thank you for our subsequent conversation, which you expressed your commitment to best pedestrian multimodal safety and to lower speed limits on SR five twenty two. These elements are all fundamental to keep everyone safe on the five twenty two corridor. To ensure additional progress towards that goal of ensuring the safety of all in the five, at the SR five twenty two Bothell Way corridor, I am requesting a letter of support from you, addressed to Washington State Department of Transportation, Washdott, supporting the city of Lake Forest Park's request to have the speed limit lowered to SR five twenty two Bothell Way from forty miles per hour to thirty five miles per hour. Currently, LFP is the only city remaining with a forty mile an hour speed limit on the five twenty two amongst the three cities of Lake Forest Park, Kenmore and Bothell. Therefore, it is essential that Lake Forest Park have the speed limit on SR five twenty two reduced to thirty five miles per hour. This change is a crucial, is crucial for the safety of the, of the users of mass transit and the general public. As you know, Kenmore and Bothell recently reduced their, the speed on the relative sections of five twenty two to thirty five miles per hour. National standards and data support that consistency is essential in the setting of speed limits and ex, and expectations by drivers. The city of Kenmore is supportive of this change in LFP and has submitted a letter to Wash, Washdott to that effect. Urge you to write to Washdott to express you and your agency's support for this change for the safety of all. Thank you, and we look forward to continued engagement and dialogue to ensure that the natural character and safety of our community is preserved. So this arose out of a conversation I had with CEO Tim at the very, after the meeting, actually, as I was getting ready to leave, I spoke with her last and asked her if she would be willing to support this. And she said she was fully supportive of pedestrian multimodal safety and lowering speed limits. So this is a very specific ask about five twenty two. With that, I'll open it up to thoughts and comments. Would that hit with a thud? Anyone? Either that or it's very happy. I'm not sure.
I'm fully supportive. Um, one thing is, would we, if, I think Kenmore is on board with the change as well. Would we have more cloud if we said our neighboring city of Kenmore also supports this change?
Um, as opposed to what I said here, the city can more supportive of this change in LFP and has submitted a letter?
I missed that part.
Okay, that's okay. Yeah. Uh, uh, Mayor Herbert was very gracious to, to put together a letter to, to, in support.
I, I withdraw my suggestion and, and I double down on support for the letter.
I talked very quickly, Councilwoman Goldman, you're fine.
I, I, I did have a comment that I, um, also would like us to see if, um, the, uh, any of the, uh, fire department or any other entities that deal with safety along the corridor would be interested in also, uh, providing a letter to Washdott. So I think we can continue this campaign of bringing in those, uh, critical folks who have real experience on these roads and, uh, see if they can. So, uh, I had a brief conversation with, um, Chief Cohen, and, uh, he seemed interested in, in putting together a letter. I think we just need to give him some information on what we're, what we're looking for, uh, for the CEO, um, sound transit CEO letter. I think this is, this is good. I would support it.
Okay, thank you, uh, Councilmember Riddle. So what, what's, should we call that a parallel effort and, and continue forward with this? What I'd like to do, colleagues, if there's no, uh, any concerns about this, Mr. Fertani, do you? Okay.
Nope. Uh, uh, this is great. Thank you for crafting it.
Thank you, uh, sir. I, I would like to bring this to the council and we can just do this. Um, you know, bring it before council and we can take, uh, take a vote and then whoever wants to sign on, we can sign on and uh, all of the, the same methodology that Councilmember Bodie was suggesting about the other letter. I think time is of the essence here, so I would like us to move forward as quickly as we possibly can, if that's acceptable to the group. Okay, Councilmember Bodie?
Um, I supported and I encouraged that we make sure we put both letters on city letterhead because we're doing it uh, as in official capacity as council members.
Thank you for the reminder. We'll do that. And then we can, um, maybe it's, it's tomorrow's Tuesday. Maybe by, uh, early Wednesday morning, get the edits into the mix so we can get it to staff.
Yes, we should get them into the agenda packet. So I, I think shooting for early Wednesday is great.
Okay. All right, let's move on. Let's see, any other comments about this? Let's move on to a, a really great topic. Um, item D, proposed surplus real property ordinance. And my colleagues, Mr. Fertani and Mr. Goldman have worked very hard on this. Um, and I, I won't even tee it up. I'd allow Mr. Goldman to, to enjoy that.
I'll, I'll try to be quick on it. Um, or, uh, a month or two ago, Deputy Mayor French, Councilmember Fertani and I, members of the community, uh, candidate, uh, Paula Good, candidate for council, attended a presentation by Homestead Community Land Trust. They took us on a tour of some of their non, uh, low income housing, their nonprofit group. And a question was asked, you know, what can cities do? And they were very clear. The most important thing a city could do is pass an ordinance that would establish a process where the city could dispose of unwanted land, uh, either for free or at a below market rate. And that they could then develop that into low income housing. And so we looked, um, Councilmember Fertani took the lead on writing this. It, I would say it's lovingly plagiarized from the city of Yakima's ordinance. Um, basically it, it establishes that process where this does not commit us to anything specific. But there's a process that would say, well, in the future, if there's a parcel that we're not doing anything with, but you know, it would be nice to develop a couple of low income housing units on it. We could pass a future resolution that would declare this surplus property and offer to negotiate with nonprofits to either donate or sell at below market. So that's basically what this accomplishes.
Uh, Councilmember, uh, Bodie, please.
Thank you very much, uh, council members. I really appreciate it. I've been, um, privileged to hear two different presentations from the land trust at the planning commission. And also to see a video presentation, though I wasn't able to go on the bus tour of their properties. And I am just so enthusiastic about this prospect for Lake Forest Park. Um, though I don't know exactly what the future holds for that, exactly what shape it would take. Um, I just want to mention that this dovetails to some extent with something I've been thinking about. Uh, as the planning commission has been discussing the comprehensive plan and that is, um, uh, having some specific provisions, uh, for, uh, citizens on conservation easements on donation of properties, perhaps as part of their estate. Or perhaps when they, you know, residents want to donate their property when they move on to, uh, another stage of living. Um, there has also been a similar uh, discussion when I first started with the parks board before we bought the lakefront park, um, about donation of, of funds and, um, uh, artwork, perhaps benches and so forth to the city. So I, I'm not asking for any changes in this. I think it's great as it is, but I'm, um, I'm just flagging those two. Donation of land and other things, um, conservation easements, or perhaps citizens donations of property to the city for the purposes of affordable housing. Um, I, I, I do know that that requires some work from our city staff to make that real. Um, but I do think it's a, an important way to go, especially as we look at the, you know, aging of the baby boomers who have lived here a long time like myself. So, uh, and then, you know, it's a, it's something to think of for the lakefront park too. Are there things that we're going to want donated or or be crowdsourcing, you know, that kind of thing. So I strongly support this. Um, I think it's a great start. I just want to say we have a larger uh, conversation, um, that we should think about, um, but we don't have to worry about right now.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Bodie. Just on point, I would, oh, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Fertani, I didn't see your hand up.
Oh, no, go, go ahead if you've got an on point.
Uh, ju- just on point, I, I think that the broader conversation is really, is really important. And when the three of us had this conversation, it was sort of, let's get something in place for the, the, you know, the immediate potential need. It's, it's not really immediate because we don't have any surplus property, but, but it, I, uh, to your point, Councilmember Bodie, it really is a bigger conversation about the ability for the community to engage in, um, generous contributions to things as similarly, similarly, the city be able, being able to sort of sort that out. And so this is just the first step, just a reminder, uh, uh, we, bringing this to you all. And then the next step would be for it to go to the legal team and then back to council for consideration. Mr. Fertani, I'll, I'll, let's stop there.
Well, thank you very much. And, um, wanted to thank my colleague, uh, Councilmember Goldman for basically doing a great job presenting it. Um, I also lovingly plagiarized it from the city of Spokane's ordinance as well. So just so you know. Um, the point though is that, um, one of the things that, uh, about this ordinance I love is the fact that it also, uh, doesn't necessarily mean rental housing. It could be, uh, to own. And as we all know, this is one way to build generational wealth. And so that's one of the things that we saw in our tour was the fact that yes, this, this is an opportunity for folks to actually start gaining wealth for their families. And I think it's a very critical thing we need to look at in the city as well. So it's a equity piece. The, uh, other point is that yes, and this is a larger part of the conversation of the comp plan update. Uh, I did basically cite a couple of these statements from the previous comp plan because I think we're just going to expand on those in the new update as we go on.
Thanks. Thank you, Councilmember. And, and on point, I think that, um, guy, we, we all actually simultaneously started into this and I was looking at shorelines and Kenmore's, they both have ordinances to this effect. Um, and then, uh, Councilmember Fertani came back with, um, Yakima's, I guess it was, and yes, and so I, this is way better than what I was looking at. And so it kind of evolved from there. But I think it is an important component of this and it's a broader, there is a broader discussion to be had. Um, and I think that is something that, um, it also sends a message to the community that we're, we're thinking forward about what we have to do to make sure these things happen. Again, it's one of those things where we're not going to use in the short term, but in the medium term, certainly it could be, you know, that's something to, yeah, Mr., uh, Lebo, excuse me.
Thank you. I want to thank my colleagues for bringing this forward and I'm very supportive of this.
Thank you, Mr. Lebo. Colleagues, any other thoughts on topic? Oh, I'm sorry. Please.
Um, just a clarification, the way this is written, the property would have to then be, that property would then be used for the affordable housing. As opposed to being applied to affordable housing, perhaps on a more appropriate lot or a larger lot. It has to be used on that property is the way this is currently written or intended to be written, I suppose. I look to the authors.
Yeah, I, I think that that's the intention. And, and I had asked, uh, at the bus tour, I asked Homestead and they said that they can be crea-, they want to be creative. And if it's a weirdly shaped lot, they can still make use of it. So yeah, the, the idea would be on this, yeah, build some, some level of affordable housing. Sometimes what they'll do is they might say, okay, here's four units, too affordable, too market rate to subsidize. But the idea would be that it would be used for housing on that particular parcel.
Thank you for that clarification. Um, I think that was, otherwise I'm generally in support of this, although as we said, we don't quite have surplus right now. So I love having this in place for the future.
Councilmember Bodie?
Um, one question. Um, so to me, the great advantage of this is absolutely on point with what Councilmember Fertani was saying is it's affordable home ownership with the opportunity to create generational wealth. Cause I think the focus on rental housing and affordable housing is, is a piece of the puzzle. But I worry about channeling people who don't have many means into that. And, you know, perpetrating, uh, continuing the cycle uh, of, uh, of rental, rental, rental. And then you're at the, at the mercy of the rental market. So I, that is what excited me about this. Um, and I was curious, did you see the little townhouse community that they showed pictures of that was in Takewilla, I think it was? Um, is that what you saw? And that's the one that had a couple of market rate? Um, uh, homes also that they sold to help defray the cost. I thought that one would be so with recognizing that the words cottage housing are sensitive in Lake Forest Park. I thought that that was a really appropriate kind of vision for Lake Forest Park.
Thank you, Councilmember Bodie. Uh, and just quickly, because this, it was really a fun tour. We went to three, three different properties. And I believe the Takewilla one that you're referencing was one of them on the hillside and it was pretty extraordinary. Um, I, I don't think, it, it was a challenging environment, so to speak, lots of steps, but it was pretty, I mean, pretty extraordinary. They, they sold a number of them at market rate to help, um, offset the cost of some of the other, um, uh, properties. And then we went to one that was on, was in West Seattle. Um, and we actually had lunch in one of the not built units, but it was, it was basically bare, just this outside structure. And it was, it was pretty amazing. Um, and I think one of the things too that came out of that conversation that I had with their, their, um, director of the program, she said that they were having some permitting challenges and it's something for us, and I won't go down that rabbit hole right now, but I believe that it's important for all the communities to think about how it is when they have these big groups of, you know, like fifteen units or twelve units, um, how they approach the permitting, um, because she indicated she was having, they were having some serious product problems there that cost them almost a year of time to get that project completed. And that's a lot of money, um, that was donated by, by members of the community. Okay, so next steps, we'll move this on to our legal review, um, and then bring it back to council for consideration going forward. If there's no other further comments. Thank you, everybody. Um, the next item we have is item E, potential red light camera installation at the intersection of one fifty third street and Bothell Way. This one is very brief and that is simply because it came out of conversations that have happened over a number of months with residents who have suggested that that is an appropriate place to put a red light camera. Um, we're experiencing a lot of issues on all of our roads and state routes. And I just wanted to test, this is purely coming from me. I wanted to test the waters with my colleagues before I pursued this with staff, whether this is something that you all are, um, think is a reasonable kind of a approach again. Um, the corridor is challenged. I, I really believe that we need to find some ways on one oh four and five twenty two to ensure some additional safety. And that intersection, you may recall, the light was placed there because of, um, whoa, gosh, twenty five years ago, after a number of fatalities, because there was no crosswalk there. And sadly, it took a long time for it to go into effect. And I am concerned now, and some of the residents that are nearby have indicated that they're concerned about red light running, um, even though there is a crosswalk there because people are utilizing both bus stops on either side. And a reminder that there is a, a very nice, uh, King County Housing Authority, um, facility directly across the street that has just been recently remodeled. Councilmember Bodie?
Yes, um, an enthusiastic thumbs up. I think it's great and, um, I strongly support it.
Mr. Goldman?
Um, just a clarification, uh, maybe, um, like red light camera versus speed camera. If we put this red light camera there, would that count against the limit of, of speed cameras we can put elsewhere? Or is this a totally independent track?
Totally independent.
Um, in that case, I'm supportive.
Thank you. Mr. Lebo?
I, I'm supportive as well. Having used that crosswalk quite a few times, it's, um, sometimes you always have to look both ways, even with the walk light.
Thank you, Mr. Lebo. Mr. Fertani, did you have any thoughts?
Yes, thanks for asking. Um, I'm just wondering, uh, have you run this by the chief and will it affect any of his operations?
Uh, not recently, but we had a conversation about a number of months ago and he'd indicated that any place that is appropriate for a red light camera makes sense as a force multiplier. You'll see that actually. any place that is appropriate for a red light camera makes sense as a force multiplier. You'll see that actually in my council, um, um, E news coming out here in a week or so.
Thank you.
Yes.
Um, on point with that, um, we should still reconnect in case that i- impacts his staffing capacity. I think that would be the only place where I think he might have an interest. Other than that, I think it's a dangerous intersection and, and this is one of our tools to help improve safety there. So I'm supportive.
Thank you, colleagues. And absolutely, I believe too, it's abs- it's incumbent upon us to make sure that if we do any additional installations or propose them that we ensure that monies are directed to additional staff resourcing to make sure that they, it's, we're not putting an additional burden there. So what the procedure would be here would be an evaluation as well as the statutory requirements are that it has to be at a state route and intersection of an arterial. But right now that's designated as a truck route and um, for example, one seventieth here was designated, short section was designated specifically as an arterial. Um, twenty years ago, when that red light camera was placed because of that very, for that very reason, uh, because of concerns about safety for pedestrians as well as vehicular safety there. We've, as you know, we've had, sadly, we've had several fatalities, uh, vehicular fatalities because of red light running here, even despite the red light camera. So um, once again, the procedural, um, I, I will make sure that, 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 that the chief and I have extensive conversations about this as well as making sure the engineering team is, um, makes the decisions as we go forward. It's not up to me. Mr.
Um, I think it would be useful for us to uh, codify that policy of new uh, new revenue from new traffic cameras would be directed into like a safety account. And I think running these two requests in parallel would be useful so that, um, just my personal opinion, I'd like to have that policy in place before we add the camera.
Thank you for that. And as a reminder, that's something that, that we've been talking about for quite some time about trying to figure out what is the appropriate um, use for that, those funds. I believe very strongly that we need to have um, an account for pedestrian safety, multimodal safety. And however, not however, and I believe that that's a big, a slightly bigger discussion because of the fiscal implications. And I think the urgency and the, the lead in to get these things completed takes a lot longer. Um, so I think we can sort of parallel, parallel effort that. So, but thank you for the reminder. I think that's really important. And then we, we could start certainly at a conversation with budget and finance about that. Well, thank you, colleagues. Again, this is just a quick touch and, and I'll, and I'll have conversation with the staff moving forward on that. Um, the last item we have on our agenda tonight is Sound City Association Regional Boards and Committees. And many thanks to Mr. Goldman for wa- being willing to bring this up because there are some important changes that are coming down the pike. And I, we've all getting, we're all getting emails about this, but Mr. Goldman's going to walk us through some of the uh, boards and committees that are available for us to apply to.
Sure. Um, and I'm going to start out by saying, please no questions, mainly because I don't think I could answer them. Um, so just some nuts and bolts, um, the deadline for nominations is Monday, November thirteenth. Friday, the tenth is Veterans Day when it's observed. We have a council meeting on November ninth. So there, that's not a whole lot of time to actually, you know, approve this and then actually go through with the application. Um, so there's just over twenty boards. I just looked at their summary sheets. Um, honestly, most of their names kind of tell you what they are, but I was thinking I could just run down the list really fast. And for each one, if there's any interest among people, just raise your hand and then either I could jot notes or I guess it's being recorded, um, but um, someone could jot, if, if there's interest. And then we could go from there. Um, I'm not quite sure what the process is, whether like individuals would apply on their own, or if this would be like an official city application on behalf of them. Um, but I just wanted to at least, you know, gauge interest in some of these.
Thank you. I mean, that's, that's a great question, Councilman Goldman. Generally what we do is people express an interest. And then if there's nobody else that is, has a, I don't dare I say competing interest because, because I don't believe it's ever occurred that the individual can apply on their own with a, with full support of the council, but it's not a necessarily a formal um, process for the, the, the application. Um, and then at the first organizational meeting in January, we, we kind of reaffirm the appointments to different groups. So.
And, and one thing, thanks for that clarification. That takes a little pressure off because then we don't have to wait for the November ninth council meeting. Um, SCA does say if two people from the same city apply, both applications will be thrown out. Because that's, because SCA, they're not going to try to decide who among is more qualified. They just want one applicant for, from a city. And I think most of these, it could be council members or it could be, or it could be the mayor. So really, it's any of the elected officials in the city. So I'll just go down the list pretty fast. Um, Advisory Council for Aging and Disability Services for King County. Any? Yep, uh, Board of Health for King County, that they, that group sets and enacts county health policies.
Let me interject something here, just really quickly on point. Some of this is going to be dependent upon the vacancies in the seats, depending on um, let's just call it out there, the elections uh, around the region. So, uh, and the reason I mention that is because Board of Health may or may not have a vacancy coming up and somebody might be reapplying who is also, who is the incumbent currently. So.
From the, sorry, on point, I think from the information that I got for the call for nominations for this period, I think that it was a shorter list than the total list as well. So uh, Councilmember Goldman, are you looking at kind of those that are currently available? The reason I know this is the appointment I'm on isn't listed because it's a multi-year term, so I don't have to reapply this year.
Um, yeah, so the, on the call for nominations form, it asks which committee are you applying to?
And that's a list.
And that's the list I'm taking. And so, yeah, some of these, if, if someone's position ends December thirty-first, then they might have the inside track, but officially it's an open seat for those. So I did not do research to the level of is, who is the incumbent, who seat is up? That was, that would have been way too much work to be totally honest. So it's really just here, these are the boards that they are soliciting nominations for.
Man, man, that's a good question. That raises a question, which, that raises a question, Tom, uh, which you and I have not discussed, but which popped into my head. So you're the Sound Cities Policy Issues Committee rep for our city. And I'm the alternate, so, but you have not run for reelection to the council. So does that mean I have to apply to be our representative?
No, in that.
I can wait.
This is for, this is for regional boards.
Oh, okay.
Not application, this is a, you know, the, the council group, you can request that, the council can point you to that.
Okay, thank you.
Or, or whatever you choose.
I was, uh, because I think there have been also Sound Cities, um, emails traveling around. But anyway, I will follow up with you.
You bet. And I, and I, and it's really important to, because of the limited. Sorry, not having my microphone on. It's really important because of the limited resources that this, this policymaking body has that you know, we're jud- judicious about making sure we don't let some things drop that are really important. The Sound Cities Association, as Councilor Bodhi can say is, is a critical component of our, of our success as a community and in, within the region. So there's other ones too that are really, really essential, uh, uh, Riot Eight, uh, um, Lake Ballenger Forum, these other things too, but those are not things that have, people have to apply for. Those are things that we can appoint. Uh, can make applications, request amongst ourselves and be approved by the body. No, no, please.
Oh, and on, on that note, so Seashore is one where we have two designated seats. And with Councilmember Cass Over stepping down, I'll, I'll still be on it, but we'll, we will have a definitive opening if someone's interested. Though I think Councilmember Lebo, you are the alternate, so you might get, if you're interested, you could get bumped up to a regular. I, um, so back to the, back to the list, uh, Central Puget Sound Economic Development District Board. I read a description, I couldn't figure out what they were. Okay, um, Children and Youth Advisory Board. Domestic Violence Initiative Regional Task Force. Emergency Management Advisory Committee. Uh, Greater Seattle Partners Executive Council. I think this one's a public-private partnership. Uh, Growth Management Planning Council for King County.
That's an important one. Well, there's still time to think about it, but I mean, this is food for thought. And again, I'm gonna stay out of this because of my status right now, but um, I, you know, I think that there's, there's some things here too. If there's things that individuals want that are a personal interest that would benefit the community based on your expertise or your interests, please buy. Don't feel like it has to be at the acquiescence of this policy group. Um, there have been plenty of places, Councilmember Riddles been participant in the healthier here group and it's, you know, and that's really important work. So it's not about specifics, um, to.
Hey, um, next up, Joint Recommendations Committee for King County. This is for housing programs like block grants.
Can I ask a question on that growth management act group? Once we have a community development director, is that, could that person serve on that group? Or is it? I just was, I, I, I've never exactly clear what it is solely a lack of it's.
One, one more quick thing on point two. Historically, the, not all of them, I mean, obviously there's just so many boards here and committees. Um, the next one, the Growth Management Planning Council. Um, in the past, there's been some individuals from the council that have participated in that, healthier here, of course. Um, King Conservation District, of course, uh, Flood Control also. Um. The PR, PSRC, uh, some of these are really, really, really difficult to get on, PSRC Executive Board. Um, and the, um, there was a member of the council a number of years ago who was on the Regional Law, Safety and Justice Committee. Um, also the Regional Policy Committee. And of course, our own, um, council member, um, Cass Over was, uh, on the, the Solid Waste Advisory Committee.
Um, King County Regional Homelessness Authority Governing Committee.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
Uh, looking at the current seats, that may be a hard one to get into. But I do know that, uh, North King County, um, or the North King County Coalition of Homelessness has been, uh, a leader in engaging as a subregion with the Regional Homelessness Authority. And I think it would behoove us to have a representative from this region because we have already sort of been the front runners and, and pushing them. Uh, so I don't know if that needs to be our community specifically, but I really do believe that we need to pull someone from that group, uh, to, to join that, uh, apply.
Thanks. Um, Law Enforcement Officer and Firefighter Plan Disability Retirement Board for King County. LHWMP Management Court, so it's a meet Management Coordination Committee, that one, it kind of sets directions and oversees operations for King County Solid Waste Management. But it is different than the solid weight, solid waste management committee that Councilmember Cass Over is currently on. Some of these are going to sound a little, little bit repetitive. Uh, yeah, I think Deputy Mayor French mentioned Puget Sound Regional Council Executive Board. And.
It's a big one.
It's a big one. It has nature policy, um, direction, but it, you almost have to work like our, our little city. Uh, would either not get on or would have to work its way out.
Yeah, and just, and just on point to my understanding and talking to the selection committee members in the past for these various things. Becoming a full member right out, out of the gate at some of these bigger ones is very, very challenging, being an alternate is, is much more manageable. It's just, it's certainly with the King County Board of Health, uh, or the, yeah. Yeah, the PSRC and the, and the health, the various, some of these bigger, heavier hitting groups. So I apologize, Larry, I didn't mean to keep.
One thing I've noticed is oftentimes, just for those who are new, um, if you have like a seat at, uh, the Sound Cities Board Member, that's also I think an easier way to get into some of these, uh, high demand, um, groups. So there's sort of different pathways for us to be able to get access to some of these, uh, important organizational seats.
Right, um, similar track, there's the PSRC Growth Management Policy Board.
I believe she is. Yeah, yeah.
And then there's the PSRC Transportation Policy Board. I'll admit that was kind of, that one kind of piqued my interest a bit. Uh, no idea how competitive it is or not, but, um.
That'll mean it's.
Okay, um, there's the Regional Law, Safety and Justice Committee. And then for King County, there's the King County Regional Water Quality Committee. The King County Regional Transit Committee. And the King County Regional Policy Committee, which covers all policies except for water quality and transit. So the, some of the redundancies because there will be like this topic for the county and then the same top, topic for PSRC. And that's the list.
Thank you, Councilmember. And just a reminder, th- this is, it really illustrates the importance of Sound Cities because they have reserved seats with, on these boards. And, um, there's, there, there's a lot of opportunity to participate. And, um, if you have any questions about this, like I, I certainly don't have um, all the answers, but I can certainly get you in touch with the people that do. Um, there are some really excellent folks that can help out there. Um, that, that are, that serve in Sound Cities, uh, on the Executive Board or on the, the, uh, Public Issues Committee as leadership that could guide you if you need to answer, have questions answered, as well as our, our friends at um, in the, in the administration down there at Sound Cities as well. So Brian Perry, uh, or Lee, uh, Leah Willoughby. And, um, we may have some new people too that I that could help as well. Any other comments or questions for Councilmember Goldman? Thank you, Larry, for bringing that to us. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Ferratoni.
Uh, yeah, thanks, Deputy Mayor. Um, the, uh, question I have is, uh, are there any that on this list that would help us as a city think strategically? So for instance, with the Lake For- uh, Front Park coming online possibly, um, would there be some of these boards that are better to be on so that we could influence policy at that level, um, more than others?
That, that's an excellent question and um, I'm not sure specifically.
Hmm, I'd love to sign up, but basically I want to be strategic about it and just basically make sure that it's advancing the goal of a city as well. Your, your mic's not on.
Apologies, ten, that might, uh, Regional Water Quality Committee. But I think that some of these other ones, yeah, that would be pretty peripheral to what you're suggesting. Uh, Councilor Bodie.
I, I would only say that, uh, the PSRC is more important than, um, a lot. And they do set policy direction that is binding. So does King County though. So, um, I believe that I may have, when I was a new council member, applied for the Water Quality Committee, but didn't get it. Um, so at post-election, there were various vacancies and, and, um, so we will have two new council members who will be able to apply to whatever vacancies are available then. But, um, uh, I, I don't know of anything offhand, Councilmember Foratani, but I don't, I never really got into that water quality group to see whether they were hands-on or more philosophical, if you know what I mean.
Thank you, Councilmember.
What I value about, I just want to say about Sound Cities is, um, hearing what other cities that are larger and smaller than us, but not the two big elephants in the room um, are, are worried about. And often it's very down-to-earth comments, um, very pragmatic and very helpful to bring back here, um, because often it parallels what we're thinking, but it's nice depth of validation.
Yes, and on point, I think that, uh, I, as I think I mentioned before, I find it somewhat comforting because they're going through. You know, we think we're doing, we're dealing with some of the issues that are in isolation, but they're sharing, they have the same issues that we have. That are in isolation, but they're sharing, they have the same issues that we have. And, or they have similar issues that they have really creative solutions for, which I find very, very. Helpful and, and, uh, therapeutic, shall we say? So, um, but I think there's some really good opportunities here, and again, uh. Some of these are going to be challenging to, to, to take a first stab at, so to speak, um, without being, you know, uh, jumping from one board. Uh, as a, a member and then going to an alternate on a bigger board and then going from there, but. The, the navigation is something that, that our friends at, uh, Sound Cities can help with.
Just a couple of comments, um. Oftentimes, Sound Cities tries to balance, uh, representation. So they want some north, some south, some, um, Snoqualmie, so. Um, it may feel like, oh no, it's going to hard to get in there, but if there's not a lot of interest from other north. Cities, then it behooves us to, to make our voice heard. Um, and then there's also some, um, AWC. Appointments that are currently open and available, and I don't know if the, uh, anyone here is interested. There's a. And I don't know how hard they are to get on. I've never been on an AWC-appointed position, but there's a Shoreline Hearings Board, Transportation Improvement Board. Affordable Housing Advisory Board, Building Code Council, and it just goes on and on. Um, so. Definitely something if. The Sound Cities isn't piquing your curiosity, but you feel like one of these could help. Maybe harder to get on, because it's a Washington State-level organization, but, um, it's something for us to also continue, continue to consider our influence outside of just the. Borders of our community and how that then feeds back into the benefits of our community.
Thank you, Councilmember Riddle. All right, colleagues, we're at the bottom of the hour. We're actually like two minutes over. I was, I was looking at the, the clock, and I thought we were going to get done actually on time, but please.
Sorry, it's not, I, I appreciate. One minute of your time, um, before we adjourn. Uh, it's not on the calendar. The open house for the Lakefront Park and workshop is Wednesday night at five thirty to. Seven thirty, I believe. So you probably got a postcard, or you will get a postcard about it. Uh, I have no sense of how. Crowded or not crowded it's going to be, but the, uh, Parks and Recreation Board members are, uh, all in, and a number of them will be there. As will our, uh, excellent consultants, so, um, I encourage you all to come and actually. Participate with your vision of the Lakefront Park and what you'd like to see.
Councilwoman Goldman.
Um, yeah, one question about the format. Um, is there any sort of large group presentation, or is it just purely pop in, pop out?
Good question. I don't know. Do you know?
I believe it's all open house.
Yeah.
Just so you can come anytime between five thirty and seven thirty.
Yeah.
Uh, on the city website, it does in fact, yes, say. So it is on the city website's calendar. If you go there, uh, stop by anytime between five thirty and seven thirty.
I encourage you to look at the website, and also if you haven't done the survey, do the survey.
Thank you for the reminder. So we have a, a meeting on Thursday, everyone, um, and just a reminder, next steps on a couple of these topics. If you have any. Um, suggestions to Councilor Bodie on the, uh, letter to Sound Transit, please, um, ensure that she's communicated with. But we're compliant with the Open Public Meetings Act, please, everyone, and then, um. And then, well, again, we're going to send the property ordinance, the surplus property ordinance onto legal and then back to council, whatever the timeframe would be for that from legal. And if you have any interest in these regional boards and committees, um, and have questions, please reach out to myself or Mr. Goldman, or we can direct you in the appropriate. To the appropriate place.
I was just thinking that perhaps, you know, uh, open meetings that we could, would a staff member be appropriate that way? Just to make sure that we don't have a situation where two people apply to the same board. So that, it, could a staff member be kind of the clearinghouse of that?
Sure, send it to me. We'll make sure that we don't have more than one.
I don't think we've had, I don't think we've had a cir- circumstance like that, but fair enough, please. That, that, thank you, Mr. Hill.
Shoot me an email. I'll, I'll get back.
Thank you. Uh, and I would just like to defer to my colleague, uh, over in Japan. Bozo. Do you have any other, any other questions or comments, Mr. Feratani?
Nope, we'll see you in person on Thursday.
Oh, that's right. Well, safe, safe travels, my friend, and, uh, thank you for just participating remotely. That looks like a lovely room. The timberwork and the. Goodness.
It's gorgeous house in southwestern Japan. I have information if anybody online basically are streaming this wants it, I could certainly give it to you.
Thank you. All right, everybody, we're adjourned. Thanks so much.